All right, we're going to call to order the December 5th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the Redevelopment Successor Agency, and the Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by the senior member of our council, Mr. Bill Kristof. The council did meet and close session this evening to consider the evaluation of the city manager. No action was taken. So we're now going to proceed to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is, as is noted on our agenda packets, we're prohibited by state law from discussing or taking action on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's available next to the chief of police at the front door, and turn in the card to the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has a chance to get heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We take the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any item. So, for example, if we're here to speak on item 16, I'll just pick one out of the air. We take the comment request cards all the way up to the point at which the staff report has concluded. Once the testimony has begun and the council questions and discussion has begun, we don't take any additional cards. So if you have an intention to speak on an item later in the meeting, the earlier you get the card in, the better. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that flip chart simply merely indicates which item the council is currently considering. We recognize that for a lot of folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or applause or cat calls or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a respectful civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak -- oh, and let me say, we will be -- we've got lots of folks here for, I believe, for the photo contest and for the administration of the oath of office for the newly elected members of the council. We will be getting to that shortly after some of our regular business items. We'll be doing this swearing-in and oath of office following the appropriate agenda item, and then the photo contest winners follow that. And so our prior practice has been to do a small reception break after the swearing-in. We're going to defer that and do it after the photo contest award, so that we're not taking two breaks. We'll be recognizing the photo contest winners and the fresh faces on the city council at the same time immediately after item five. All right, so with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Jim Brewer and Teresa Blackburn.
Got it. Thank you. I'm here this evening to address the council and the members of the audience on an important issue that the Brighton-Bottary Community Action Network has been working towards. And I believe in your packet that you've already received, you have a packet from us that kind of outlines the program and some suggestions we have and our concern we have about our seniors. And I'm going to read from a document here that has a summary of that, what you have in your packet. "The Brighton-Bottary Community Action Network Senior Services Committee has been working for a number of years on issues of importance to our aging population. We have drafted a summary of challenges and recommendations regarding urban planning and our aging population," and you should have that copy in your packet prior to this evening. "The document addresses several issues related to urban planning and seniors: who they are, their challenges, their economic impact, how urban areas address these concerns, and how our city can address these concerns as well. There is a growing body of evidence showing that the aging population had definite implications for environmental and city planning. The concerns and goals may be similar to other age groups, but for many seniors, they may not be attainable. A policy that includes senior citizens is crucial to our survival as an inclusive community. Without this, we may lose an important opportunity for economic health and sustainability. Imagine for a moment that you are a senior, you can no longer drive, who may have difficulty walking, who may have limited income, or whose family is not close. How would you function? Could you continue to live a full life? This is a dilemma facing many of the baby boomer population that will triple in the not-so-distant future." And in your packet, you'll see some percentages and growth patterns that are predictable. And it's a little concern. It's quite a bit of a concern, not just a little concern, it's a big concern. Urban planning should not only include new development that has access to city amenities, but also address the questions, where do the seniors live? How can this city support economic and social interaction between all ages? Are we doing enough to remove age-related barriers? Strategic urban planning will help aging population organize their lives to live autonomously as long as possible. The newest technology is showing us that path. Appropriate distances between residences and destinations eliminate barriers to vital goods, services, and leisure activities in the community. Recreational activities already in place are available to everyone. Transit connectors and infrastructures are woven into planning fabric so that those who are unable to bicycle or walk short distances are supported by affordable intermodal connectivity for access to necessary amenities and are not faced with an insurmountable task. And we see that every day as seniors. And you probably see it when your parents and your relatives yourself.
Jim, I need to draw to a close.
I'm coming right there. Thank you.
But, I mean, really. We have a whole bunch of speakers later in the meeting, so we want to make sure we give everybody a chance.
I understand that. So, there's two recommendations I'll be done. Seriously consider the importance of addressing these issues as you work for the future of West Sacramento. Invite professional and academic urban planners who have expertise, knowledge, and understanding of the aging population, issues and opportunities, into your city planning process. And thank you very much for a little bit of time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Wall of West Sacramento, for the record. It's been over 30 years since I've been riding the bus, but only last week did I come up with what I think is a pretty good idea. Actually, I did lose one of my stickers that I paid $50 for about five years ago, shortly after they went up to $50 from, I think it was about $30. And I kept wondering about that. I guess it just fell out of my pocket or out of the holder here, and they come in the little wax paper envelopes. And so I just decided to take a piece of Scotch tape, wrap it around my finger, sticky side out, and I just taped it on the back of my pass so that it wouldn't fall out anymore. And I'm suggesting to Regional Transit that they make the stickers just maybe an eighth of an inch narrower so that they can be placed sideways underneath the name on the front, so we get them say 25th or shortly thereafter, and we still want to show the old month. So we just place them sideways right away, and people won't lose them after that. So, that's just a little thought. And then I've heard that over at the senior sitter on Cummins Way later this month, I don't know just when, but I think we're going to have a little get-together honoring John Olson. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. And Steve Raymond?
Thank you for having me here. About six weeks ago, the Financial Planning Association held an event here at City Hall, and I'm here to express my gratitude. It was a pleasure to work with you folks. About a week or so before our event, the registration literally exploded, and to like two times the number of folks that we anticipated. The staff in the Human Resources Department, John Perry and Michelle Juarez, just immediately took charge, made some changes that, you know, we couldn't have had this event without them taking that action. So, it was, this event is, you know, folks come to get free financial advice, get their questions asked, a little bit of education, wonderful program. It's been going on in about 30 cities for about three years or so. Our event this year was the second largest ever in the country. So that gives you an indication, bigger than Chicago, New York, Dallas, LA. And so, you know, it's a testament to our partnership here. We hope to continue that in the future. So, thank you so much for allowing us to have it here and provide those services.
Just real quickly, thank you. It was a wonderful event. I had the opportunity to actually talk to some of the participants and talk to yourself as well as some of the staff, and it was a fascinating presentation on so many levels. There's a lot of very good information from folks who just don't have the resources to pay, you know, what it costs to get good financial advice and not have to be sold a product that you don't really need. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the comments under item 1A, so we'll proceed to item 1B, Council Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, just quickly, the Housing Development Corporation met on November 15th. They're continuing to look at refinancing of debt to reduce or to increase cash flow, and it looks like that strategy's working there financially. I think they're in good shape. They're continuing to move forward with the implementation of solar, which is a project financed deal on West Capitol II. And just the status of the units, we have 277 units, 28 are vacant, so it's a 10 percent vacancy, and we're housing 750 residents with 243 households, all low income.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johannesen. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. This morning, just this morning, we had a meeting of the downtown Riverfront Streetcar Project, the Policy Steering Committee, myself and Mr. Cabaldin, Merrick Cabaldin were there, and Mr. Johannesen was there as the alternate. Today's agenda was pretty full in that we are, the joint project between the City of Sacramento, City of West Sacramento, Yolo County Transit, and SAC Regional Transit are all undergoing the process of moving forward, a streetcar proposal and project, and putting it into what's called a small starts process, small starts projects for, as a federal program, the Transportation Department, that we will be looking for funding and getting approval for this. It's an ambitious project, so lots had to be done and approved and moved forward today, including a revised MOU for between the agencies and the sponsoring agency, which is SACOG, which this council will be seeing, I think, in January? I think January it will be coming back, if that's right? And as well as some other underlying principles, roles, and responsibilities. So everything is outlined in the framework for that moving forward is available for us. There was also a review of the preferred alternative, which is, in short, the route that we'll be studying and getting approval on, which would take from this spot in City Hall, across Tower Bridge, stop at Really Field along the way, and then across the river, which would wind up through, up to Third Street, up to what is proposed, the new modal, and then down back through downtown and into a part of Midtown. Part of what we're considering were costs, part of what we're considering were methodology of how we pay for it, and how the agencies would share those costs and or look for funding. One of the interesting parts about the route and the facilities we'll need is a maintenance facility, and us being able to possibly house a maintenance facility here in West Sacramento on the Bridge District. The opportunity that it might present for us is a line that would go north and south, which would have to bring a streetcar basically down off the main line and down into the maintenance facility. It's a possibility. It might cost a little more because we don't have that infrastructure there, but if we were to build it, then that obviously opens us up for, and it could open us up for a north-south line, which would service the Bridge District and even maybe up north towards some of the areas up there, which we think we've all, at some point, have contemplated. So, anyway, it was a very, very good meeting today, attended by all, and so I'm sure we'll be seeing more because this project is gaining steam and moving forward. So, thank you.
Mayor Potem Viegas?
Yeah, just for briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. On Monday night, Councilmember Ledesma and I met as a school-city two-by-two. Nothing real major, other than there was an update that the Parks Director provided to the committee relative to the redo of the Bright Park Master Plan. As you know, there was a series of meetings and workshops. A lot of public input went into the Bright Project Community Action Plan, which includes a whole host of sort of the wish list, if you will, and that is being used as the basis for what will now transform Bright Park. It's not just Bright Park now. We've incorporated in the district half. This is a wonderful partnership, a great example of a good partnership, working with the school district to redo Bright Park, reconfigure it to make it much more efficient in its use of the school district's property and the city's parks services, and then it will include a connection to the Bright School, the redo of Bright School, as well as some of the field uses at Alice Norman Park, and even include some stuff at Holy Cross School. So there's sort of a continuation of services with a path that connects all of the different areas together. So it was a great presentation. That presentation, in terms of what staff conceptually is presenting, will come to the council for a workshop, I believe, in January, as it will do the same to the school district board in January, early February, so that everybody's sort of on the same page conceptually before staff invest too much more time before we move forward. That was it.
All right. The only report I have is from the Sacramento Council of Governments. We met at the end of last month. A couple of key issues beyond the streetcar, which was also one of our topic areas, is we've been working on a set of shared services initiatives that are region-wide. The council's pretty familiar, I think, with all the work that's been happening at the county level on service sharing, but we're also looking at some regional solutions that either SACOG or third parties or individual local governments within the region could provide. Examples or kinds of things that we've been looking at are compensation surveys. You know, we still mostly in the region, 23 cities and seven, six counties, each of us has somebody call the other, call a dozen or two dozen, hey, how much are you paying your firefighters? And what's their benefits package? And if they get an extra two units of college credit, how much would that change it? And so we'll call and ask them that. We'll call at Roseville and ask them that. We'll call Folsom. And then next month, Folsom will call us and ask us the same question. Everybody's calling each other. It's extraordinarily inefficient. And so we've been looking at a range of options, some of which would say, well, maybe, what if we all just gave Roseville five bucks to make the call once and then share the information around? That's sort of a low level of service sharing. All the way up to, is there a way for us to connect our HR data systems to be able to look at that information in a more systemic way and allow us to look at things like recruitment and retention? Where are folks moving based on, and relate that back to compensation? It's a kind of shared service that could be done by a unit of government, by SACOG, or potentially by a third party. Another example is travel demand forecasting, and we're all by, we all pay, most of us are paying fear and peers or someone like that to run travel models and demand models for development projects or other purposes, and we all pay a lot of money for those individually. It's actually not that costly to do, and SACOG has most of the data necessary to do that themselves. And so we've been looking at, you know, is there a way for us to save local governments quite a bit of money by developing the capacity on a demand basis region-wide? So, that's a significant, those are two examples of about a dozen initiatives that we're exploring on a regional scale. SACOG's awards are going to be coming out this month, the Regional SACOG Salutes Awards. And the only reason I mention that is that we're the winner. We are going to be the recipient of the Regional Blueprint Award, which is sort of the top-level award for the region, and that's going to be in recognition of the work that we've done on the Bridge District Infrastructure Project. So the roads and park and sidewalks and bike lanes and Riverfront Trail and all of that are being, will be honored later this month as the, as one of the top two projects in the region for advancing the region's smart growth and blueprint principles. So it's a good, it's a good, it's not the first time we've won this regional award, but it's, I think we may be the only one that it was serious more than once. All right, so that's, Mr. Kristof?
There is, when you said shared services, it sort of triggered. LAFCO met Monday, which is sort of unusual for us because usually we meet Monday, the first Monday, but because of some SACOG issues and some board members needed to get to a SACOG meeting, we changed it until Monday. But the LAFCO's in essence doing sort of the same thing, is sort of taking the county lead as far as shared services are concerned, and some of the questions, some of the issues and some of the concepts that Merrick Cabaldin spoke about are the same ones we're studying at LAFCO to see if there is a way in which we can share some services and at the same time save some money. And one of the big ones is going to be animal control. We're still plowing through all of that, but at the same time, there might be a better way to, in essence, handle animal control so that all five jurisdictions are equally represented, and it's just more efficient. So, anyway, but that was LAFCO.
Thank you. And for the city, for the Assistant City Manager, one other thing from SACOG, we had a report on project delivery. This is a mundane sounding thing, but it's actually really critical. Our region strives to try to deliver, which is to say, to actually build the projects we get money for from the state and federal governments on time, and actually try to rush them faster than the state and federal governments say that we have to do, because by doing that, we can get money from other regions that didn't spend their money. We've been, we're the, we've been the top region in that battle for several years. That report just came out, we still are, and West Sacramento has a 100% on-time delivery rate. We're one of the only jurisdictions in the region to do that 100%. That's nothing to do with us. That's entirely our staff and project teams. So if you'd convey that, that's a good marker of the commitment and also the appropriate budgeting and planning in the first place that mean, that account for what's really needed. So. All right, next we're going to, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ledesma?
We did, I did need to report out, we just met prior to this meeting. The Port Commission met, and we had just one agenda item I think is important for the public to start getting an understanding about, which is, the Port Commission and the Port staff are working on a business plan. We are, this evening, we went through a cargo analysis as part of that to understand the tonnage and cargo going through and looking at projections going on forward. We'll be meeting again in January, January 9th is the next scheduled meeting. There will be a workshop coming up, where we'll begin to review some of the, some of the findings we're getting and getting the public feedback on the port. We're all interested in the port. But we are looking towards having a finished business plan and some reviewed model, probably in the February, March, early March timeframe, so.
All right. Okay, with that, we're going to proceed to item two, which is consideration of approval of Resolution 12-9, accepting the official campus and certification of the November 6, 2012 election, and declaring elected Christopher Cabaldin, Mayor William Kristof, and Oscar Viegas, council, and Measure G, approved by voters. All right. I guess you don't need a staff report from Ms. Richardson?
I like the results.
Ms. Rankin can report on this item.
Thank you. Good evening. As you know, there was an election held in the city on November 6th, and the Election Code 10263 requires that the city council adopt a resolution certifying the results of that election. And at this time, I would like to congratulate Merrick Cabaldin and Mayor Potem Viegas and Councilmember Kristof on their reelection, and ask that you approve the resolution certifying the election.
All right, so it has already been moved by Mayor Potem Viegas and seconded by Mr. Johannesen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So now we'll proceed to item three of the swearing-in.
Yes, and I'd like to begin with Mayor Potem, Oscar Viegas, please.
I, Oscar Viegas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I will take this obligation freely.
And I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge. That I, sorry, that last, that always trips me up.
Freaking hell.
I'm nervous. It's a lot, all right. It's important.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kristof?
Can we just get up and shake each other's hands?
I, William Kristof.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the United States.
And to the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
I, Christopher Cabaldin. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
Keep going.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Yes.
All right, let me turn first to Mr. Kristof.
I would like to make a few comments. First of all, for the community, I really want to thank you. It's really an honor and a privilege to sit up here and try to solve some of the city problems and city issues and city questions that continually come up, and And it makes one pretty humble when, I've been doing this for a number of years, and to, to be reelected is, is really sort of a humbling feeling because it makes you feel like, you know, you've done a pretty good job and they, the people continue to support you, and, and that's a humbling thing. Really like to thank my wife, I mean, she, she pushed and pushed and pushed, I gotta go out and do this and gotta go do that, and, and running for campaigns isn't the easiest thing in the world, but it really helps when you have a person like Brenda pushing and making sure you're getting out and you're doing it. My sisters and brothers, the whole family really is sort of pitched in, and it just makes it a lot easier. So I know there's a lot of things that are out there, and I just can, the only thing I can really do is give you the, my truthful feelings that I will try to do everything as the best that I possibly can, and for that, I really thank the, the people out there. Thank you.
Mr. Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank my family, my family's here, my wife Katie and my children Lynn and Vincent, and as Bill said, it really, you know, you don't do it by yourself, you really require the help of your family, and so it absolutely does not happen without the full 100% support of your family every day. It's not just me coming to these meetings, every time I'm here, I'm not with them, and so there is a sacrifice at the entire family level. So, so thank you very much for, for being here this evening. You know, I, I too, like Bill, want to thank the entire community of West Sacramento. I'm so incredibly fortunate and so proud to be able to represent this wonderful city. I've been on the council now, this is my fourth term, and, you know, every time is a new experience, every, every term has been a different experience, but I am so proud and I feel so honored to be able to represent my community when I go out into other jurisdictions and talk about the wonderful things we're doing here. And I know that there are so many residents here who also feel that same way, although they don't sit up here every evening, they're out there serving as ambassadors and feeling really good about where they live and representing our community in a great way. And, you know, as evidenced by election night, Measure G, that was something that, you know, a lot of folks probably didn't fully understand, but the value of getting reassurances by, by residents voting in support of Measure G to allow this council to continue, this entire city, to be able to continue to do the good work with, you know, post redevelopment, and that's a term that's still confusing to a lot of people, but I can assure you that Measure G is going to go a long ways in helping to continue our success here in our community. So again, like Bill, there's a whole lot of work still to be done, and I'm very fortunate and very excited about the prospects of what the next four years look like, and I'm ready to get, get down to work. Thank you very much.
Well, I can't acknowledge anyone in the audience because I'm the one with no family, so I guess I will try to dispel the notion that you can't do it without a family. But in part, that's because the whole community, from the moment I set foot, when I moved here 20 years ago, has been, has been my family here. This is an extraordinary place, and I was in a, in a panel earlier today in Sacramento with a bunch of folks from across the region, across the country, and in other states, they're aware of what's happening in West Sacramento, what we're doing, and when you take a step back, what we're doing is quite normal. It's, it's everything we said we wanted to do when we incorporated 25 years ago. What's extraordinary is that we're actually doing it, but also that as a community, the voters, the citizens of West Sacramento are totally committed to that, and we completely believe, and we don't, we're not ashamed of our optimism, we're not ashamed of demanding accountability for results and for doing the right thing, we're not ashamed, we're not embarrassed to fight with each other. As I look around in the room with all friends and supporters, I can't see one person in here I haven't had a disagreement with, or who has not screamed at me, God, you're doing the wrong thing on this one issue, or this issue, or that issue, and we fight madly over things that we care passionately about in this community, and then we come back together the next day and we work, you know, with, I've got a shovel, you've got a shovel next to me, and we're working to build the community together. And that's the only way it works. In so many other places, the fights take over and nothing gets accomplished, and here, we fight because we care about each other, because we believe in the future of the city, and it's so extraordinary. And none of what has happened in West Sacramento, regardless of who made investments, regardless of any policy decisions, regardless of anything, would be possible without the unique voters, without the unique citizens of this community who know what they want and are willing to do what it takes to make it happen, sometimes the tough decisions, and take the long view. So I have been so fortunate and blessed to be able to serve the people of this community. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to, to continue to do so, but I'm just so, so thankful to be part of a place that knows how to make amazing things hap, amazing things happen and to care about each other while we're doing it, and to preserve the spirit and the legacy of all the generations that came before us while looking towards the future of the next. So thank you very, very much. All right, with that, we are going to proceed to item four, which is consideration of selection of Mayor Protem. Is there a staff report on this? No staff report, the item speaks for itself. All right, so are there nominations for the Office of Mayor Protem?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kristof?
I would move that it be Mark Johannesen.
All right, so Mr. Kristof nominates Mr. Johannesen, Mr. Viegas.
Mr. Mayor, I would nominate Chris Ledesma.
Viegas, Mr. Viegas nominates Mr. Ledesma. Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, ask the clerk to call the roll.
For the nomination of Councilmember Johannesen.
I, me, Bill.
Mr. Ledesma.
Oh.
Your vote?
No.
Mr. Kristof?
Yes.
Mr. Viegas? Mr. Cabaldon?
No.
Okay, the motion fails.
All right, so we had a second motion by Mr. Viegas.
For the nomination of, uh, Mr. Ledesma?
Mr. Ledesma.
Mm-hmm. Are you asking?
Counsel, no, that was, Councilmember Kristof?
Yeah?
Pardon me?
Yes.
Yes?
The other one failed.
Mr. Viegas?
Yes.
Mr. Johannesen? Mr. Ledesma?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabaldon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and congratulations, Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you, very much.
Do you have any remarks, Mr. Ledesma?
Let's move on.
Okay.
Got photo winners.
All right, item five, at long last, item five is a presentation recognizing the winners of the 2012 City of West Sacramento Photo Contest.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the return of the photo contest in celebration of our 25th anniversary, and our Public Information Officer, Art Schroeder, who's been the mastermind behind the contest, will conduct a presentation tonight.
West Sacramento's photo contest returned this fall for the first time since 2009, but it was a perfect time to help celebrate the city's 25th anniversary. Thank you, Mayor Cabaldon and the City Council. Tonight, we ask you to present the 13 winners of the photo contest. The theme asked amateur photographers to shoot extraordinary images of subjects that promote West Sacramento progress during the past 25 years. And in keeping with that 25-year anniversary theme, the prizes were $250 first place, $125 second place, and $25 third place. And the entry categories were available to residents and non-residents. For residents, there were three age divisions. And then there was one category open to all, for the first time, a special black and white category. Now, an independent body of judges scored each photo to help determine the top three in each category. Unfortunately, we only had one bona fide entry in the age 25 category, so only the first-place winner in age 25 can be named, but in all the other categories, we had the top three. The judges were selected from the city's Commission on Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation, the News Ledger, and the West Sacramento Press, the Chair of the city's 25th Anniversary Team, Bob Johnston. We had two past members of the City Manager's Office, Dan Harris and Larry Von Kennel, and two members of the city's Community Relations Division, Anthony Arias and Teresa Willock, and also thanks to Carol Richardson for your guidance on the photo contest. So at this time, we'd like to have the City Council reveal which prize the winners have won, first, second, and third place. The results will be posted on the city website and city highlights, and we're also going to have a display just outside this room afterwards. We'd like to start with Mayor Protem Chris Ledesma on the presentation of the West Sacramento Photo Contest winners.
It's my pleasure to present the winners in the non-residence category. These were amateur photographers who were visiting or working in West Sacramento or just enjoying our city, took a good, close look, and decided to take a picture and entered the contest. So I'm gonna announce in, or backwards order, third, two, through first. Our third prize winner lives across the river in Sacramento in a loft development on J Street. He enjoys coming to West Sacramento's Mexican restaurants, as well as the eatery and shopping at our, at our Nugget Grocery Store at Southport Town Center. He also admires the Ironworks Lofts west of the Bridge District, and what's not to like about those, maybe it's his future home. There's the picture there. The reflection of the sun glancing off the Cowsers Building on October 10th provided this photo opportunity to our winner, Richard Abrusie. He calls it radiating. So congratulations to Richard, you win $25. Is Richard here?
Yes.
The second-placed winner, who will receive a prize of $125 in the non-residence category, also lives in Sacramento. She attends classes at Sacramento City College, not only in Sacramento, but also across the street at the West Sacramento Campus, so thanks for being here, and this is not a strange place to you. So our winner, Pat Sobranis, did I get that right? All right, okay. Pat loves, thank you, calling up Pat. Pat loves the Turner Library and the Civic Center, and she says it's, it's brilliant and well-executed, is what you said. Her friend Maria told her about the photo contest and stopping in the green zone near Reely Field. She says she took a quick shot of one of her favorite structures, the Tower Bridge, and there it is. Now she's looking forward to starting her own business, Pat Sobranis Creative Services, specializing in graphics writing and, not surprisingly, photography. So congratulations, Pat. I don't get a chance to see the pictures. And now the first-place winner, winner of $250 in the non-residence category. This person grew up in West Sacramento, graduating from River City in 1985. He recently moved to Sacramento, placing him in the non-residence category, of course, but he still works in town, 20 years now, for Granger Industrial Supply off Industrial Boulevard. He discovered the photo contest after seeing a poster in a store window, so good job to our staff for getting the word out. Attaching his camera to his tripod, John Henigan took this picture. He calls it City Hall HDR with high dynamic range. So congratulations to John Henigan of Sacramento, you win the $250 for top prize in the non-residence category. So to continue your awards, I'd like to ask Councilmember Johannesen to please come forward.
Well, it's my pleasure to announce the first of three categories that deal with residents of West Sacramento. This is for residents under the age of 25. The third-place winner will earn, is going to earn $25. She's now attending Sacramento City College in Land Park after graduating from River City High. Jennifer is pursuing a double major, one is early childhood learning and the other's photography. Her brother urged her to enter this photo of the Tower Bridge, there it is right there, and the reflection below, just one of some 200 photos that she took for this contest. Jennifer Trickle is a third-place category winner in the residents under age 25. Congratulations, Jennifer, is she here? All right, the next award is for $125. He's a junior at River City High, he'd like to become a 3D modeler. He'd like to see a public pool in the city's north area, and he suggests the city keep bringing entertainment to West Capitol Avenue. Good idea. And one more suggestion, by adding one big, he'd like to add one big Central Park to West Sacramento. For his photo, he really went after the city's 25th anniversary theme, taking a photo of the Galleria with the banner decorating the 25th anniversary. Nice job, Donovan, and congratulations, Donovan, Donovan, Donald, Donovan Carlson, are you here? Here, great. All right, and the final winner for the residents under 25 will receive 100, or $250. This West Sacramento resident is transferring from Sacramento City College to CSUS in January, and her major is in childhood development. And she took, looks like, over 100 photos in one hour for the contest, and then turned to her sister Vera for advice on which one to actually pick, and Vera was the one that actually picked this. Well, she actually, Vera is actually the star of this photo, wherever that is. There we go. But win or lose, the photographer, Yelena Ahonova, decided that the photo would be least, would be the best one that she would be able to show, and it would be a great, a great gift for her sister. Winning first place in the residents under 25, congratulations, Yelena Ahonova, you win $250.
Well, welcome and thank everybody for being here, and I want to thank all the people that took pictures. I mean, it's not just the winners, but all of the people that participated. It's, it really, it's a fun time, and it shows a lot of, really, sort of, community spirit, and something we enjoy. This photo contest helps us celebrate our 25th year. One category was set aside this year, and that is for people who are 25 this year, and this is being the 25th anniversary for the city of West Sacramento. So, and I guess the bad part about it, there's not three winners, there's really only one winner. But anyway, it's been, and I think that one of the things that has happened is, I've been asked to give this award because this person is 25 years old, and I was elected to the City Council 25 years ago. And so it is sort of- And so it is sort of, it was sort of, some people thought it was sort of fitting. I guess it tells my age, but that's another story. So I'm looking forward to meeting our winner. This West Sacramento resident actually works for the city of West Sacramento in Parks and Recreation. His, his photo of his dog, Wally, glazing out the window was taken October 13 and is called "Wally's Wishes." That's sort of cute. Please come forward Douglas Hughes, who turned 25 in June. And you win 25, and you win $250. And by the way, happy birthday. And with more awards, here's Oscar Villegas.
So next up is the third place winner in the West Sacramento residents age 26 and older for $25, and the prize is a $25 gift certificate. Or cash, it is cash, we're giving them cash, wow. Residence Dina Curtly also happens to be West Sacramento's Urban Forest and Beautification Manager. She worked for the city since 2004. Judges selected this photo from Dave's Pumpkin Patch. Dina took the picture with her phone, with her camera phone. It represents the iPhoneography, a style of phone-camera photography becoming most popular in art galleries. And the city's Community Center Art Gallery also featured iPhoneography earlier this year. So congratulations to our third place winner, Dina Curtly from West Sacramento. All right, the second prize winner in residents age 26 and older wins $125. He saw a poster about the photo contest at Laboo. His photo experience is self-taught, going back only a couple of years. He recalls how one of his friends, a contest winner back in 2004, really talked up the contest. His workday in Stockton was canceled on October 15th, so he stayed home that beautiful morning and ventured out to Riverwalk Park, where he took this picture from the riverfront of the Ziggurat and Calsters Building. Andre, excuse me, Andre Klimushkin is the second prize winner of the residents. Congratulations. All right, and now for our first prize winner in the residents age 26 and older, the winner of $250. The skies over Reilly Field were eye-catching, it's October after a storm. What he calls a crazy sunset helped Adonis Villanueva take the first place in this category. Adonis is an IT consultant with Territory in California and Wisconsin. So congratulations to Adonis Villanueva. You are a $250 winner this evening. And with our final category this evening, Mayor Cabaldin.
You know, we started doing this contest to start telling the stories of West Sacramento in pictures, sometimes because the TV wasn't covering us or the newspaper didn't print anything but bad things about us. And we wanted to give a visual representation of what was happening in our community. And not just the big gigantic development projects, but everyday life, everyday people, everyday dogs that are in our community. And it's been one of the greatest treasures that we've developed, this bank of photos that chart our history and our progress, but also what stays the same in our community. And that sense of community and belonging and family that is so important in West Sacramento. So it's great to see, even in today's, in tonight's photos, that same connection between the new, the great buildings and the great vistas, and also the people and the animals of our community as well. So let's find out who the first place winner is in our special category for this year, which is a black and white category. The winner will get $250. This is his first time entering the contest, and you've already met him because he was our second place winner in residents age 26 and older. You saw his photo of the Ziggurat and the Calsters Building in the background. And now he's the first place winner in black and white. So please congratulate Andre Klimushkin of West Sacramento for his first place winner in the black and white. Andre used a wide-angle lens to snap the photo that you just saw of the baseball statue that's on loan to us from the Crocker, right here on West Capitol Avenue. This is the one. Nice. Bad mayor, third place winner in this category. I didn't see this whole page. So that we do have a second and third place winners in this category as well. The third place photo is the work of Frank Pereira, who was also a third place winner in 2009. This year, Frank took a photo of one of West Sacramento's longest-running and most treasured establishments, the Club Pheasant. He took this picture with his iPhone and then converted it to black and white. He works for the city as well as an application support specialist in the Information Technology Division. So congratulations, Frank, and I know he's here, I saw him earlier, right up front. And we're closing with the second prize winner, who is Janice Wang-Polegutto, who's been taking pictures since she was seven, when her dad, who is also a lifelong photographer, got her started. She saw a poster about the contest at the Earth Fresh Food Market off Jefferson Boulevard in the same center with Karate and Wicked West Pizza. And the headline said, "It's back," and a happy Janice said, "I have to do that." So on October 10th, she visited Dave's Pumpkin Patch, where she took this photo entitled, "Oh, Great Pumpkin, Where Are You?" That's her daughter Gabby walking with her friend Annette. She says the girls got to bring home a pumpkin, but now Janice gets to bring home the cash, $125 in second place in the black and white category. Congratulations, Janice. All right, so we've had a great time tonight, I know, for the council meeting and celebrating the winners. Congratulations and thanks for joining us for the contest. The winning photos, as Art said, are being posted outside the council chambers. We're now going to take a short break to get a group photo, and then also to allow folks to congratulate their contest winners and also to meet the, for the families of the, of the folks who were sworn in earlier, to meet their friends as well.
Back to you this evening. It was last before you on November 14th for a workshop to outlay some initial data collection and options that we might be looking at going forward. And at that meeting, you directed us to come back with an urgency ordinance on a temporary moratorium for 45 days on outdoor cultivation of medical marijuana. This is to kind of temper the situation until such time as we're able to return to you, which within the 45 days would be January 9th. We would attempt to bring back some of the data that you asked for, as well as information on what other jurisdictions are doing, what is happening in the courts, and some options for you to consider for our city. So this is an urgency ordinance. It does require a four fifths vote by the city council and would go into effect immediately if it passes. And this is a public hearing. So at this time, I would close my presentation and turn it back to you for questions and/or suggest opening the public hearing for comment.
Okay. All right, are there questions for staff at this time before we proceed to the public hearing? All right, seeing none, then we will open the public hearing. We have several requests to speak on this item. And if you weren't here at the beginning of the meeting, we do have a three-minute rule just in the interest of equity and fairness. We apply it pretty strictly, but pretty strictly to everyone on all sides of the issue. So just with that in mind, and the timer in front of the clerk gives an indication of the time remaining, and we look forward to the testimony. First will be Martha Mills. Welcome.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to once again speak about my concern on the issue of this moratorium. I last spoke to you, I guess it was a couple of years ago now. I just wanted to say that eight years ago, when I was shopping around for a place to call my home and to buy a home and settle in that community, I first looked in Grass Valley and Nevada City because they are a small-town feel and they have great pride and effort in restoring and preserving their vintage homes and their vintage feel in that community. I was shopping around and touring homes, and within pretty much an hour and a half or two, I came down with a raging headache. And I realized later that I had arrived at the peak of pot harvest time. And so from that, I basically elected, because of the smell also that permeated the area, to not move and buy a home and settle and put down roots in Nevada City or Grass Valley, much to my dismay, because those are lovely communities. Instead, I found my way here to West Sacramento, where I bought the first home I saw, which was a vintage home in our historic district. When I last spoke to you, I was dealing with an issue on our block with the cultivation of marijuana in one of my neighbor's backyards, a fairly extensive one, which they had said was legal under certain terms. In any case, it was not uncommon for me to walk, when I'd come home at the end of the day, to walk into my home and the stench, the smell permeated my home, regardless of the fact that I'd shut the windows and the curtains and done whatever I could to keep that smell out of my home. So the choice for me to have in my home not have that stench was taken away. As part of their cultivation efforts, we also gained two pit bull dogs chained to the front of their yards, their yard that threatened people whenever they walked by on a leisurely stroll through our neighborhoods. They had floodlights in the backyard to encourage maximum growing hours. And eventually, it came to the situation where there were cars that stopped by, pretty much double parked in the middle of the road for a quick run in and a quick run out. So they clearly had gone past any particular intention that they may have had in the beginning. Our only recourse, how do you prove harm when it's a smell? How do you prove harm when you have pit bulls that intimidate people when they walk down the street? How do you prove harm when there are floodlights in the backyards at night that weren't there before? Well, it's a very difficult subjective experience, but it does devalue my home and my neighborhood. So what we are forced to do is just have nuisance, get as many neighbors as we can to call and complain, and thus what your policemen are saying, that they get those more calls. It takes a lot of calls in order to establish a true harm and address the problem. I don't want to see a repeat of that on my block, and I really request and advocate for an ongoing ban in moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. William Rex?
All right. Banning cannabis growing in backyards and other people's homes is a lot less expensive than indoor harvest. And an indoor harvest, starting up, will cost about $1,000 for the first month. And after that, it's $2,000, not $2,000, $200 a month to maintain that. And it's a pretty big percentage of people's paychecks, even if they're on minimum wage, which would cost a lot more for patients to medicate that actually have diseases that are being treated with cannabis. And that's about it.
Thank you. Warren McCray? In case you weren't here earlier, we don't allow the booing or the clapping in the chamber, so.
My name's Warren McCray. I'm a resident of West Sacramento. Before, it was a city. I'm born and raised here. My father is born and raised here, just for some people are saying they've moved here for this thing. What people don't understand is the smell only lasts two and a half months. And the thing about dogs, that could be anything. I own all kinds of dogs, and my chihuahua is the meanest dog. I have a pit bull that will run from you. So people, you can't miss, people are judging books by covers, and it's not true. I am a disabled person, they say cannot walk. I am off all medication, I'm on cannabis. I cannot afford to grow indoors all year round. I could grow a little bit outside, and the smell's going to bother someone for two damn months. What's wrong when my neighbor's garbage stinks, I can't enjoy my jacuzzi? I can't complain on that. That's just their garbage. So people are complaining about for two months of their life, when it's curing cancer, it's curing people's disabilities. I should be on social security. I'm saving money because I'm not going down there and filing on it, but they say I'm disabled. And then marijuana has got me off all the pain pills and got me out of bed and got me back into the community. So people need to really do their education before they know what they're talking about. I've researched it, and I'm a walking testimony. People need to research before they start talking bad about things. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Vanderwhite?
All right, thanks, everybody, for having me here tonight. I'm a new current resident of West Sacramento. I just moved here about a month ago from Chicago. I can say it's definitely a different place. The efforts for medical marijuana in Illinois just keep getting slammed. So I kind of came out here to find something different. Looking at me, I'm just some kid. I'm 26 years old, but I'm a combat veteran, been in nine different countries and served in a war. I've currently lost seven friends to PTSD and combat-related issues. And I currently serve from PT, or suffer from PTSD. Before the war, I was highly athletic, very outgoing, always wanted to be the center of attention, always fun. When we came back from war, I started falling into like an alcohol routine, just trying to suppress the memories that I experienced. And through that time, I suffered myself through a criminal background, DUIs and fights, assaults, everything like that. And I started reading up on PTSD symptoms. My dad was in Vietnam, my grandpa was in World War II. My dad suffers from PTSD really, really bad. My mom's a chronic pain sufferer from multiple car accidents. Well, we applied this bomb to my mom after several different surgeries, different medications. She was on methadone and stuff, and the symptoms are starting to dissipate, and she's able to walk and get out of bed now. My dad, he's on the other side of marijuana. He doesn't see eye to eye with the whole thing. So when I come in and I start using marijuana, I'm now able to leave my room. I'm able to eat a full meal. I can go out into public without looking around, being worried if somebody's going to do something to me. I have a friend in Colorado a few years ago, suffering from PTSD, who just kept pushing the issue, and he didn't want to seek any treatment. And I think a lot of the time, people need to speak out and what's on their mind. He ended up taking his own life. And so a lot of the time, like, people have treatment here, but they can't afford it. So these outdoor cultivations are a great way for people who can't afford the medication they need, or don't want to take those prescription medications. A lot of the time, marijuana is now being dispensed in veteran hospitals throughout the country and the states allowing medical marijuana usage. So just take the time, just consider, just from everybody, from the little guy to the big guy, just how important just saving that little extra dollar is and doing it ourselves in our backyard. So we know where it's coming from, we know it's safe. There's different research strands that we can help for different situations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mason Rex?
Hello. My dad, he was on two milligrams of Dilaudid, which is, it's supposed to be seven times stronger than morphine. And he couldn't like get out of bed, he couldn't do anything. And then he tried marijuana, and he could, he got out of bed, he started being more active. He took his places, he went like grafting and stuff. But yeah, so. Yeah, he just started being more active, and before he couldn't get out of bed. And that's about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Betty Braden?
Hello. I'm a medical marijuana patient, and I need to grow my own medicine at home. I'm on social security disability, and I have been for the past three years, no, five years. The past two years, I've been using medical marijuana, and it has totally made me off all other kinds of medication, which was narcotic pain medication. I was very happy when I heard the swearing-in, that part of your swearing-in was to uphold the constitution of the state of California. As you well know, the people of the great state of California in 1996 voted Prop 215 as part of our constitution. And then also set up Bill 420, which gave us medical patients safe access. I noticed there's no dispensaries in West Sacramento. So where do we get our safe access here, except by growing? Since I'm on social security, my total income per month is $850. 400 of that goes to rent. The remainder of that really goes to food, because I'm not eligible for food stamps, because $850, you know, is a lot of money to make in a month. So where can I get safe access for my medicine, except to grow it? And I'm sorry if that smell, for a short period of time, bothers the neighbors. I truly am, because I'm a good neighbor. My neighbor grows roses. And I respect that they grow roses, but you know what? They have to fertilize those. And I don't know if you guys know what's in fertilizer, but it does not smell good. It is very offensive to me. However, I have not come here to ask you to put a moratorium on roses. So I expect the same for me. And my medicine is essential. It's not just, it's not just for enjoyment. It is essential for my quality of life. So I really respectfully urge you to not pass this moratorium. There is no sense of urgency for a 45-day moratorium. Harvest season's over. There's no reason for this meeting at all. There's no reason for this item on the agenda. And there's no reason to ban this, because it's a nuisance. Because there's a lot of nuisances, and if we go around banning every nuisance, you know, you guys will be real busy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Rex McCray?
Hi, my name's Jennifer. I'm a West Sac patient, West Sac resident and patient. My story is a little different. I was born and raised as a, in a Mormon family. My family's very, very active. I currently am not. Two years ago, I started this mission as my mother faced fibromyalgia, my sister faced fibromyalgia, my uncle was diagnosed with MS. And my sister was diagnosed with a severe disease called intercytial cystitis. It's ulcerative colitis in your vaginal and urethra area. For a year and a half, my sister was unable to urinate on her own. She was unable to even be catheterized without going in to have a vaginal flush. There's 20 doctors that are treating this. Her doctor, thank God, stepped up and recognized cannabis. And so after a year and a half, said, you know what? Despite your beliefs, I think it's time we look at this. My sister was on 16 milligrams of Dilaudid. My son was telling you, Mason is my son. My husband was on two milligrams, seven times stronger than morphine. My husband was dead, in bed, couldn't help us, could be no husband to me or my children. My sister was on 16 milligrams of Dilaudid plus 50 milligrams of morphine. Six weeks, six months ago, what I've been fighting for, for my family, finally broke through, and she agreed if she did not have to smoke it, she would try it. For five and a half months, my sister has urinated every day on her own. She was urinating three times a week when a doctor allowed her. Banning cannabis is not the answer. There's several options we can go. The 99 plants, these huge grows, we can get down to a reasonable number. We can have two patient maximums. We can come up with something else to combat the smell. You're not having the, I haven't heard anybody mention the issues of the police reports as of yet. I know it's a concern. You're not having patients like myself on a roof with a gun, shooting neighbors that are climbing over your fence. There needs to be a reasonable, a reasonable, all the clubs are closing. Where are people supposed to get the safe access? They need it, we need responsible, we need to find a way. And that's what I urge you guys today. There is no urgency for this moratorium. We can find a solution. We don't, aren't looking at outdoor grows for the next 45 days. The harvest is over. And I urge you guys to do the research, to look into it, and to find some kind of solution. Because the cost for indoors on a monthly basis for 2,000-watt lights is about $160 a month, times 12. People doing the grow for two months outdoors could get their whole year's supply off of one grow that nature's created. And instead, they got to go pay 160 bucks a month for the electricity to provide every single month for that whole year's supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelby Lucero?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for inviting us to speak tonight. Tonight, I'm asking you, as a patient for medical cannabis, not to ban the outdoor grow. grow for the following reasons. The medical cannabis dispensaries have been closed in most of the surrounding counties around us, including West Sacramento, and your patients don't have safe access for medicine. There is no dispensing within the city of West Sacramento, which in July of 2012, voted in by a state law, let's see here, Second District Court in LA County, so the state laws may not ban, cities or counties may not ban dispensing in cities and counties all throughout California. So you probably should reconsider that before you put a ban on outdoor growing, because these patients don't have anywhere to go for safe access for medical cannabis. The dispensaries in the counties around them are closed. The dispensaries in the cities have quit taking patients, because they don't want to be the big propaganda that the federal government are going to start looking at. And these patients don't have anywhere to go for their medicine. And these are people that probably don't have access to public transportation, to go to the little corners and nooks and crannies of the places that they propose to put dispensaries in the Sacramento city. By allowing somebody to grow their own plant in their backyard, they can control what goes in it, they can make sure that it's safe, it doesn't have chemicals, it's not going to harm them. And they don't have to buy medicine that they can't or probably couldn't afford. The people that are very sick would have people maybe that could grow a plant or two for them. But I think that the 99-plant thing, as said earlier today, for, and the pit bulls barking, that, that stuff is nonsense. The truly medical people need this, this plant and need this medicine. I think that's all I have to say for you tonight, but please consider it. You just took an oath, you know, to swear in to be the people that protect us here in this city, and we really need you to make a really thoughtful decision about how this affects the truly sick people in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Haley Moore?
Hello, my name's Haley. I am a resident, born and raised here in West Sacramento, and actually go to the West Sacramento Center, Education Center over there. I just wanted to say that, you know, an all-out ban isn't going to make people stop growing their medicine, especially people who don't follow the laws or who might not be as concerned with being a good neighbor. So I wonder what kind of penalties would be involved with that, and people who are desperate, who do need to grow medicine outdoors, who are low-income. Also, I really love those houses too, that area that she lives in, and I think that education and regulation is really important to let people continue to grow. Those Victorian houses, they're just gorgeous. I used to live in that neighborhood myself, and I really love those houses a lot. And I just wanted to say pretty much that, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynette Davies?
Hello, I'm Lynette Davies with Crusaders for Patients' Rights. I spoke with you, I think, a couple of years ago on the dispensary issues. And I know that we've had an issue with the cultivation, because both parties in this have a rights, both our left side and our right side here. And it is, it is important that we have some type of boundaries that the city can live with, so that our patients do not suffer from this. We have, if you force people to grow indoors, there can be CPS issues that haven't even been addressed here. Right now, CPS takes a look at parents that are growing, and if they're growing outside, they don't have an issue with it. When you're growing inside, that can be an issue. We have a lot-size consideration. Possibly you could, you could give an amount or a space or an area that people can still grow outside, but you'd have to be considerate that some might have acres, or some might have a quarter of an acre. So I mean, it is something that can be looked at. The amount of plants. Outside, a patient can grow two or three plants and have enough medication to take care of themselves. But if you bring it inside for the same amount of medication, they'll have to have 20 or 30. That's, that, you know, you've actually not just increased their cost, but you've increased the risk for mold, for arrest, for other issues that they could have. Even cities that have some type of, of issues with their cultivation or placing bans are finding that it's, it's, people are growing anyway. We don't want to make people criminals. We don't want to take a step back and say that what you're doing is going to make you a criminal. So it's not that I'm against having a moratorium for the next 45 days, because in the 45-day limit, there's nobody growing right this particular time. But I hope that you take the same amount of time that you took with the dispensaries, that you actually set up some type of workforce or some type of committee that can take a look for your city that will both meet the needs of your public, both those that don't, that don't want to have the growing and those that do want to have the growing. Because we do not want our patients to lose safe access here in the West Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the testimony on item 16. So we're going to close the public hearing. I'm going to turn to the council first for any questions of staff, before we proceed to the discussion. All right, seeing none?
All right, I'm sorry. I was going to ask a couple of questions. Oh, there you are. Hi, Charlene. You know, when this first came up, I just wanted to ask a couple of clarifying questions. I know a couple of other local jurisdictions took action, and we were, there's some confusion about what action they actually took. Do you, do you have any clarification on, I think it was Sacramento, Elk Grove also had, took similar action?
I had that just recently, too. Roseville, I believe, just took action, similar action to what we're looking for tonight. And that happened, I believe, on November 1st. I'm sorry, I didn't have that in front of me. Elk Grove took an action quite some time ago, and they actually have an ordinance in place that has regulations on outdoor and indoor cultivation. But their, their ordinance also allows some dispensaries. Lincoln is looking at it, and Sacramento, they directed their staff to work on an ordinance.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Charlene, has there been any consideration? I don't know if it would be possible to have basically a season where the plants would be outdoor and indoor during the time when they're most offensive to people, the smell and all that? That's the first question. And then, I don't know if we've talked about, you know, if there's possibly to set land aside somewhere. I'm just trying to think out of the box a little bit here on alternate ways to maybe accommodate some of the folks that it may be financially burdensome to grow inside.
On your first question, well, actually both questions, those are things we'll need to, to look at over the next 45 days. The season, obviously, it probably revolves around the typical outdoor vegetable-growing seasons, so starting in the spring, and then going through to the fall, September, October. And then, with regard to looking at a set-aside area, that is something we hadn't really thought about yet. But again, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
And the other, I know this is coming back, because we saw this crime statistics and the escalation of certain crimes. But we don't really know if, if those crimes are related to a particular part of the grow season or not. You know, there may be some relevance there. For example, all the crimes are around the time when this stuff's harvested versus, you know, at other times of the year. So we know there's, it looks like there's an increase in crime, because of this burglaries and, and backyard jumps and that type of thing, that is, I think it's a big problem for me, that that stuff is happening. But was it not, we've seen a trend that that is happening in certain parts of the season?
That is something we can bring back more detail next time. And also, we, we don't have any of Yolo Narcotics Enforcement Team information yet either.
All right. Further questions? All right, then, council discussion? Mr. Vegas?
I'll jump into it. You know, this is always so difficult, because when, you know, there's, certainly this evening, there's very compelling arguments for why we need to be sensitive, and, and it's easier for us sometimes to just make policy on, and hope that it all kind of fits into the, you know, that one sweeping policy we'll address, but it generally doesn't. And I know the costs are a real issue. I mean, there's, there's no question that costs are, are an issue for folks who can't afford it but need it, and certainly provides that medical, medicinal piece that, that I think we're all striving for. I'm, I'm not certain that, you know, the dispensaries that, the fact that we don't have dispensaries in our own city necessarily preclude folks from getting access to it. I mean, I think there are plenty of dispensaries. Sometimes we seem to think that the river is somehow a boundary that precludes us from going across to Sacramento. I know there are plenty, certainly downtown and midtown, in terms of dispensaries. So I don't, I don't necessarily buy the, the idea that if we don't have it immediately accessible, it's, it's not, not accessible at all. And so I guess I struggle with, a little bit with, with the whole idea that, that, you know, there is certainly a cost associated with trying to keep it indoors. I don't know what the perfect solution is. I know that we, we certainly have a problem in our community with what we're seeing, and certainly the number of complaints. I mean, I've seen it myself. I mean, just the rapid, complete disregard for what was intended to be pretty clear legislation to help folks, you know, grow it for what they need it for and, and, and manage it. Let's face it, there's a lot of abuse. I mean, there's no question, people are planning a whole lot more than what they should be entitled to. And those are the ones that are screwing it up for everybody else. And, and you know, if you did what you should reasonably have, it's probably not going to be a big issue, and people could probably get along pretty well with that. It's those that are abusing it. So I don't know what the perfect solution is. I'm not sure this is the perfect solution. I would certainly encourage us to continue to explore ways to, to manage it for folks who are trying to be respectful of their neighbors, and to, you know, grow what they need and what they're entitled to under the current laws that, that apply. But it's those that are abusing it that are, that are screwing it up for everybody else. So it's frustrating for us, because we don't have a perfect solution. We can't surgically go in, and we certainly don't have the resources to manage every single house. I mean, that's not, that's not on the table for consideration. I don't think, I don't think we want to get into that business. But I don't see these, without taking some action, how we can reel this in, and then thoughtfully go through the winter to figure out a better way to, to manage it. I don't know what that solution is. We're not going to figure it out this evening, but I'm certainly not opposed to looking at other ways to, to manage it for folks who need it, and who want to respectfully have it within what I think the rest of the world views as a reasonable approach.
Comments? Councilmember Desmond?
Thank you. And thanks, staff, for bringing this back. And I do want to thank everybody for your, your testimony and your feedback. I do appreciate the perspective you, you brought tonight. Obviously, this was brought to our attention because of those who are taking it beyond the bounds of what the intention of the legislation and the, the Compassionate Use Act intended. I, I might disagree with Councilmember Vegas, only in the sense that the law was not very clear from the state about what could and cannot be done. And unfortunately, the local jurisdictions have had to try to manage this and enforce this. And it's created the, the uncertainty by our, by our law enforcement, the uncertainty by us on how to approach it. And thus, you have a few hundred jurisdictions across the state who are trying to, one, manage, help our residents who are having to live next door to those who abuse it, as well as help those who are in need of that, of marijuana as for medicinal use. That's the mess we're in today, and we have to, we're up here trying to figure this out. And I appreciate your call for us to take a thoughtful response to this. And I, I plan on doing that, and we need the time to do that. And I think my, my ask is, or I'm not saying my ask, but my, my view is, is to move forward on this. But we do need the information. We do need to get some, some more facts about how we can thoughtfully go forward. So when the growing season does come, people are clear on the rules, people are clear on what we need to do, and people are clear on, and, and we're comfortable with it. We're not going to make everybody happy, but we need to be, to, to work towards a solution that, that can fit the needs of our residents. So on that sense, on that standpoint, I, I just want to make sure we can get as much information and, and make a thoughtful awareness as we go forward. I know you're working on it.
Yes, and I did find my notes. You're correct, Sacramento did. Their ban is in effect as of November 20th. So that's recent. And Roseville imposed the ban on November 1st. Elk Grove imposed one back in April. And Lodi considered a similar one in October. So, and I'll bring back more detail on those in January.
And there might be learnings from their staff already on ways they can improve or, to, to, you know, because you hate to take a shock and approach to dealing with it, and maybe there's a more different way that, that what they've, what they've implemented can be improved with. We can learn some, some methods to improve what they may be built upon.
Yes.
Those are things we can, we should consider.
We're hoping to not create something new. We're hoping to learn from them and try to be very efficient about this.
Thank you. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I think just, just to close, I'm supportive of the 45-day moratorium to get the information, not only the information on the statistics, the crime statistics, but, but also maybe flesh out a little bit of these alternatives to see if, if there are paths that we can, I mean, it's, our, our, one of our main jobs on city councils is to protect the health and safety, provide for the health and safety of the residents, and to think about citizens as a whole and not particular segments. So I know all of us are going to be looking at finding some way to balance legitimate interests of, of folks that really need this versus the, you know, the adverse effect of the growth outside, which would be, at least what I've heard so far, is, but basically the aesthetics, the, the air, and also the crime statistics. So, you know, hopefully, within this time, we'll have some information to come back and, you know, possibly be creative on this. You know, I think it'd be easy just to go ahead and say, you know, a ban completely right now, but, you know, I think the people that need this have got a compelling argument that it's expensive, and, you know, if you're on limited income, it's, it's expensive, that if there's some way to accommodate that, to see if we can do it reasonably, and then also protect the health and safety of the residents as well.
Kristoff?
Yeah. You know, earlier today, we did get sworn in. And we swore that we would pledge our allegiance and support the Constitution of the United States, support the Constitution of the State of California. In this particular issue, there's a difference of opinion. Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California don't quite jive. So it causes a whole lot of issues. Personally, I wish, one of the things that would happen would be, we would ban marijuana altogether, and only allow it to be sold through pharmacies, like I get my pills. You know, I go to Rayleigh's, or I go to Kaiser, or wherever I go to get my pills. That's where this should come from. It should not be an individual thing. At least that would be in my, the little perfect world, I guess. And so I am going to support the 45-day moratorium, so that we can get more, more information on this. I know what I want will probably never, ever happen, but at the same time, I think I've got to, I've got a responsibility to 50,000, 48,000 people, to try to make the best decision that I can. And I think that that would be the best decision. Thank you.
So for me, this is an impossible issue, just as the dispensary was. Dispensary ban that we ended up adopting. Dispensary ban that we ended up adopting because I, I believe in the power of the drug to, to have medical, real tangible medical benefits. I've seen it. I know plenty of people who have benefited from it and rely upon it. At the same time, we're caught in this horrible state-federal dispute that, I'll be very blunt, as I was last time around, the advocates were dancing about before, which was to say they would come to us and say, you cannot regulate anything about this because it is a, it's medicine and medicine is not a local government issue. You cannot tell us what to do. We, you know, the, the state law prevails and the state law doesn't say anything and so we can do what we want to. And the federal government said, we don't, we don't care what the state law says. It's, it's a, you know, it's a class one narcotic and we, and if you have any connection to breaking that federal law, then you may be subject to prosecution as well. And we tried. We spent a huge amount of staff time and, and contracted legal bills and our own time and community time trying to craft just the right ordinance, one that wasn't about all that stuff, that was about how do we do, that's a small town where we have to balance these issues and where, where patients are our family and our friends and sometimes ourselves. How do we solve that? We could, surely we could do that. We do, that's the kind of thing we do in West Sacramento. And we couldn't because everything we tried to do was a lawsuit threat. Right? Well, well, maybe we could put this kind, maybe we could have this kind of a boundary or maybe we could say this kind of limit or maybe we could have this kind of requirement. And in every case, and it wasn't Lynette, but it was always someone, some organization that was saying, well, if you do that, we will, you can count on it, we will sue you. And we're a little city. We don't have the, we, we are, I don't have the resources to be defending a policy like this all the way up to the state or the U.S. Supreme Court. And so in the end, we said, we cannot deal with all of that. And so we simply, the, our, the only option is, the only thing that is immune from litigation is for us to simply adopt the, the no dispensary ordinance that we ended up adopting. It was heartbreaking, both because of the amount of time that we had spent on it, but because of the patients who we knew would, would not get access, the kinds of access that they would need to, to medical marijuana that at least I believe they should have. But we had no choice because we, we, it was an all or nothing proposition. Either we let sort of just the Wild West to dispensaries happen and we couldn't regulate things that really mattered to us, or we had to do a ban. And ultimately, the only choice that that left us was a ban. And in part because I think the advocates thought that, well, this was the best of both worlds. Well, and then the Justice Department said, no, no longer, right? Places that don't have effective regulatory structures for medical marijuana like California, we're not going to respect your local law. We might look the other way in some other states that have, you know, reasonable regulatory schemes so that at least they can say, somebody is regulating what's happening, but not California. Because in California, we created this wall around it. No one is allowed to touch it, not the legislature, not the cities, not the counties, no one. And we regulate alcohol way more than we do medical marijuana, either dispensing or the growing and production of it. And, and we've been told repeatedly, you can't do anything about it. And this is the problem again here. I, I mean, for all the reasons that have been said, I mean, I want to, I want to allow a modest amount, regulated amount of, and timing and all of that. But the challenge is, and it's no one in this room, but we have other, there are plenty of advocacy organizations who, as I'm looking at the list of cities that have taken up these ordinances, a quarter of them have been sued over, you know, they said, well, we'll, we'll limit the, you know, the growing times of, of the seasons and then somebody gets sued over that. We'll limit the, we will limit the number of plants. Well, you can do that, but only as long as it's more than six, no matter how large the parcel is. It has to be six because that's what the state says. And if you do anything less than that, then you will be sued. Any kind of restriction has caused litigation and that isn't something we can be immersed in, right? So it's frustrating because designing the right answer, which we could do as a community, figure out, well, what's, what's reasonable here between neighbors and friends and families and patients, what's a reasonable approach? We cannot do because of the, the legal environment. We're stuck with these two stark choices. And of those two stark choices, the only one that we can, given the, the crime statistics and everything, it's the only one, only one we can choose is the ban. But it, but it's heartbreaking because that's not the right solution. That's not the right answer ultimately. You know, last June, I voted at the, Mr. Kristoff would not be happy, but I did vote at the U.S. Conference of Mayors for a resolution calling on the Justice Department to withdraw marijuana from the, from that classification and put it, at least on the medical side, to put it in, in a category that would allow it to be, you know, dispensaries pharmacies and, you know, and, and other approaches. So to recognize that this, this fantasy that we have and that the voters of Colorado and Washington and other places are emphasizing needs to get fixed. And the federal government must fix it. And frankly, the people of California could go a long way by allowing a little bit more reason, by explicitly allowing some regulation in California, it would make it easier for the federal government. But the road to that, solving that, despite what I think we would like to be doing, is not something that the little tiny town of West Sacramento can fix. And that's the challenge that I, that I, that I see. So I'm, I'm hopeful in the 45 days, we'll, we'll learn enough from other cities that something will change or maybe the President and the State of the Union address will announce that they're going to tackle this issue. I will be in Washington, D.C. with the Secretary of Health and Human Services and the Attorney General and in January, I'll bring it up again. But that's the challenge that we're facing. And I, because I, I do think that there, you know, there's, there is, there is support on the council for sure in trying to figure out how to make medical marijuana dispensing and growing work. But we have to do it in a way that is not going to bankrupt us or to say, screw you to the rest of all the community concerns. We know it has to be a balance and we want to achieve that, but we're, we're, we're stuck with a deck that the, that the state and the federal governments have, have dealt us. And so I'm going to vote for this tonight, hope we keep trying to figure out other solutions. I don't think we, we can't, despite what Ms. Davis said, we can't spend the kind of time we spend on dispensaries because now we know how futile that might be. But we, I, I, at least for me, I'm definitely open to new solutions, but I do think we're going to have to get either the state and/or the federal government to, to start bringing a little rationality and responsibility to, to the, to how they're approaching this issue. They're both acting like children.
All right, any further comments on item 16? If not, then this is a forfeit vote. So when the motion is made, we'll, we'll ask for a roll call so that it's, the forfeit is recorded if that, if it is achieved. So is there a motion on item 16?
Still moved.
All right, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Ledesma and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Johansson? Mayor Protem Ledesma?
Yes.
Councilmember Kristoff?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Yes. That motion carries and the ordinance is adopted, the 45 urgency period as well. All right, thank you. And thank you for the, for everyone that came this evening on all sides of, all dimensions of the issue. You definitely have been heard on, on the issue and we'll keep, you know, keep trying to find, find ways to solve this, both in the 45-day period and beyond. So thank you. All right, item 17 is continuation of public hearing for consideration of resolution 12-08, authorizing the city manager to execute an energy services contract with Siemens Building Technology Division to retrofit city-owned streetlights. Dirkson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're requesting that you open the public hearing and continue it to a date uncertain. We're looking, we've been working with Siemens for an extended period of time. We have looked over some contract agreements. We're still negotiating on some language there.
Enough said. All right, well, then we'll open the public hearing on item 17. And without objection, we will continue the public hearing to a date uncertain. And bring us to item 18, which is consideration and adoption of an urgency ordinance 12-13, amending the contract between the Board of Administration, the California Public Employees Retirement System and the City of West Sacramento. And also at our desks is the attachment to this item that was to be, in the agenda item was noted as to be delivered at a later date. That is now being foremened for members of the council as well. And along with a revised ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the last step in implementing the contract with FIRE for the second tier. And because those negotiations went longer than anticipated, in order to have it take effect, we have to have an urgency ordinance because it has to take effect before December 15th in order for it to, for us to comply with the terms of the MOU that we've negotiated with FIRE.
All right. Are there questions or discussion?
Nope.
This also requires a forfeit vote, so we'll ask the clerk, oh, a new motion?
Make the motion.
Okay.
Right, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Ledesma, seconded by Mr. Kristoff. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johansson? Mayor Protem Ledesma?
Yes.
Councilmember Kristoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Cabaldin?
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Item 19 is continued consideration of proposed on-street parking program for the West Capitol Commons project located in Rayleigh's Landing. Mr. Bermudez?
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. Before you tonight is a continued consideration of proposed on-street parking program for the West Capitol Commons project. Just for a real quick background, that project is located, excuse me, north of Tower Bridge Gateway and between Third and Fifth Streets and just south of G Street. As the council may be aware, in July of this year, design review approval for the West Capitol Commons project was approved. It's a phase one and phase two development. Construction and some site grading is ongoing on the phase one portion as we speak today. But during that time, the design review, there was a parking program that the developer wanted staff to consider. In that program, the developer was proposing some on-street parking along Fifth Street, G Street and Third Street. At the time, council considered the request, but requested staff go back and add additional information and requested that additional analysis be prepared to analyze this particular condition, the condition for allowing on-street parking. Staff consulted with the traffic engineer, Ferran Peers. We received the analysis back and that analysis determined that the proposed parking request, which would be parallel parking on Fifth Street and diagonal parking on G Street and a proposed concept to eliminate a travel lane, southbound travel lane on Third Street, be workable and something that the city should cons, may consider if we so choose. They did identify some safety concerns on G Street, which, or sorry, Fifth Street, which would be to move the parallel parking further to the east, five feet, I believe. And then on the G Street, parking requested that a couple of diagonal parking spaces be removed for site safety issues along the Third and G Street intersection. In addition, in regards to the Third Street, the request for a removal, a temporary removal of the travel lane, the information coming back from the consultant did suggest that that particular modification would work. What they did is they analyzed average daily trips as well as level of service conditions in the existing condition as well as in a future build-out scenario and determined that the level of service at that Third Street and Tower Bridge Gateway would not be impacted until further down the road as development proceeded around the vicinity of the project. And what they did is they pulled data from the Bridge District EIR as well as Rayleigh's Landing EIR and determined that a percentage of build-out in the surrounding area of about 65% would be that tipping point to have some associated, associated impacts if they were to allow, if we were to allow the temporary removal of the traffic lane. The one element not included in the analysis and it is unable to be determined is the timeframe of when you get to a 65% condition. So what staff did and included in their staff report is made a conservative effort to, and a reasonable effort to determine when that condition would happen, which in our estimate, it could be anywhere from 10 to 20 years. So what we decided to do, knowing that the development activity around the area is going to be increasing as well as the potential streetcar could come online on TVG, we proposed a condition that would allow the temporary removal of the southbound lane on Third for a period of five years. And then at that point, the developer would have to come back and a traffic engineer prepare an analysis to determine if there's any associated impacts and increases in the level of service and conflicts as a result of development that isn't there at this time. So staff is recommending that the council look at this condition as well as, you know, and we totally understand from our last meeting that, you know, removing parking after parking's, you know, been, you know, in place is a difficult decision and understands that this is clearly a, a policy decision that warrants more discussion and staff is looking for direction. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant and developer are here if there's any questions that they can answer.
Johansson?
Yeah, Jim, one of the, one of the concerns I know that we talked about before were the retail component on the corners. Has there a discussion been had about whether, under the staff's proposal now, that retail is okay? I think the discussion was if there's too few parking, you're not going to be able to get people to get into the retail and it's going to be difficult for retail to survive on those corners. But does the layout that you're proposing address that issue?
The layout that you initially saw in the design review included parking spaces that were closer to the intersection of Fifth and TVG. Those have been removed because of safety issues that have been identified. So technically, you know, the parking for the commercial would occur on, on Fifth Street. There could be some internal parking if we get to a phase two that the developer may build into their project for phase two. But at this point, the only parking to serve that commercial would be the parking on Fifth Street.
Okay. Do we have any idea how that's going to impact the retail?
We didn't explore that.
Or feasibility retail? Yeah.
The retail actually gets constructed in phase two. So the parking, there, there would be onsite parking at that point as well as if you approve any one of the things tonight, there could be the on-street, Fifth Street parking. And, and that should be enough to support the retail. But really, what's going to support the retail in this area is stronger transit and streetcar.
Got it. Okay, all right, thank you.
I mean, this was important for me, that this be separated on the comeback and, and I appreciate the work that's been done on it. And I'm generally, I mean, I, I'm generally averse to, I think, well, certainly it's grimacing already, to the, to removing space out of the public realm for, for parking in today's urban environment. But I think that what's, the work that's been done to demonstrate that both the need and the capacity in most respects is appropriate here, are prepared to, to support it without the Third Street piece. The Third Street piece, I think, is particularly problematic and especially, I mean, for some of the reasons that are outlined in the traffic study around bicycle visibility and safety and that sort, and that sort of thing, which was one of the early concerns. Second is around the capacity of that street directly. Although level of service D is acceptable in, and this is a concern on Tower Bridge Gateway, and level of service D is acceptable, it's not our goal, right, to get there. And, and we're willing to get to level of service D in areas this close to the waterfront in service of accomplishing amazing things, right? It's not, it's not, that's sort of our default in all cases. But more fundamentally, and I think this, this was clear today, was that the prospects for construction of the North-South Streetcar Line, in addition to the Streetcar Line that was part of the analysis here, have become much more, much, much more real as a result of the, the federal small starts process and the work that is underway. And so both, both the, 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 the value of the streetcar in serving the project, but also on the North-South alignment, you know, having to go in and have already made a five-year commitment and try to unwind that with folks having just moved in, saying, but I moved in here because you, there was parking, how, how can you take it away from me? And we need to build a streetcar and meet our federal obligation on timeframes. That's not, that's, to me, that's not a, that's not something to be, I'd be prepared to vote for. So I'm prepared to support the, the rest of the package, but the tweener that you had identified in, in the staff report, I'd, I would, I would go for not including the Third Street and just approving the parking on Fifth and G. Right.
Other discussions?
I just have one question. What's our confidence level that phase two will be constructed and built?
We, our confidence level is growing. We had, we had a face-to-face meeting with several PG&E representatives last week and we're moving towards talking about relocation, solutions, maybe even possibility of abandonment. We found out that PG&E has some other projects in the works in the city, working on their gas transmission mains that actually may result in this line being able to be abandoned completely. So we're, we're, we're preparing some things for them on what we found, what our property rights are or not are in this area and how that affects PG&E's property rights. rights are or not are in this area and how that affects PG&E's property rights. And so we're sending that over to them so that they can review it with their legal. We are also putting forth preliminary findings of public necessity and benefit and, and actually initiating a request for them to start the project of relocation and/or abandonment. And so we committed to get that to them in draft form so that they can review it in a little more detail with their legal by Monday. And then they've committed to us that they would respond to us within a week. And we would get back again together and have a face-to-face meeting and try to keep this moving forward.
Well, that's good to hear. And the reason I bring it up is because we had a meeting before this one, or there was a meeting before this one, and it was with the port. And the port made some assumptions that certain things would happen and for whatever reason, they didn't happen. And now we have a mess. And I want to make sure that that same kind of issue doesn't happen here. I want to make sure that, I mean, for me, the most important phase of this whole project is phase two. And so, and the reason is, is because that's where the commercial component is or the retail component. And that's, that to me would be very, very favorable for that community because it would give the residents and give people that are either walking by or whatever, give them a place to go. And so that's very important for me, the phase two take place.
All right, for further questions or discussion? Motion? And are you moving it with the, the Third Street exclusion? Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Was that clarification on the Third Street portion?
Microphones weren't on, yes.
Not including the Third Street?
Not including, yeah, sorry, Joe.
All right, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries, council calendar, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to point out that we are going to be meeting again next week on December 12th, which is the second Wednesday of the month, which is a little bit unusual for us, but we're meeting early because of, of the Christmas holiday. And also, Mr. Tuttle is not here this evening because he went, is going on his way down to Riverside to represent the city at the California Transportation Commission, meeting on an important item for, for us.
So was that the city manager report, too?
On the city manager report, I just wanted to give a shout out to our public works crews this weekend who worked diligently all day Saturday and all day Sunday on the, all, some of the localized flooding issues and they worked really hard and kept some of the, the issues to, you know, down for us. So they, I just wanted to compliment them for their hard work.
Very appropriately so, thank you. Please let them know the council, on behalf of the whole community, deeply appreciates their work and their commitment getting it done. All right, city attorney report? Staff directors, members of the council? All right, as we move to a motion to adjourn, I would like to ask that the motion be made that we adjourn in the memory of three individuals and, and that have been important to West Sacramento who have passed in recent days and weeks. First, John Olson, who I think is well-known to every member of the council, who is a sort of small-D Democrat and big-D Democrat, too, extraordinaire and who's been a tremendous volunteer, community activist, but also with tremendous grace and charm and class all of the time and, and with his wife Grace, have made tremendous contributions to this community, both in what they've accomplished and the, and the model of activism and citizen engagement that they have portrayed. Second, Miles Treaster, although, although not a resident of our community, was a deep advocate for West Sacramento through his work at the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce and on many, many projects. And his firm located here as well was a significant employer and a very good court, a community citizen. And finally, today, Mort Friedman, who for many, is well-known in the region as the developer of Arden Fair and a major backer of the Crocker Art Museum and many, many other regional projects, was, but has, had been a resident in the Park Boulevard area of the city. And after a long struggle, he passed away today and his services are Friday. And so three, three, three very different, but outstanding citizens of our community we've lost. So there's a motion to adjourn in their memory. Some of them, Mr. Johansson moved and Mr. Kristof second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries and the meeting is adjourned.